Make sure it's ordered, please.
I can't figure out if he's got.
We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I can't figure out how to forward. She wants two things.
Need a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Steve, Steve, come. The one thing we're going to talk. I just thought somebody ought to save that 22,000 to Larson Law, you know, I know and you know, but if Steve was here, he could explain what it was about there. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's there, but just.
He wanted, kind of wanted to hold off till after October because of what could happen yet. Some possible lawsuits, so we can't go into it.
Well, that's what some people know that that ain't.
There is a possibility for more lawsuits.
Still in litigation.
It's still in litigation until after sometime in October.
We paid them the money. It should be settled, but it couldn't. Yeah, okay. But I just thought.
But we didn't pay it.
To Larson Law. I mean, we did.
Right, it's all handled through the lawyer.
Technically, we did. The check shows Larson Law office.
Right.
So.
But they haven't paid.
We don't know. It's to them now.
It was a 50-50 portion. It was one to us, one to Brule. And it was something happened in the jail, and that's about all I think we would be able to say.
Okay, yep.
Okay, on. Danita.
I said aye.
Oh, okay.
That's for the.
All right.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Ah, thank you. Um, there is no public input. Arlen. Ray.
Ready for me already? Wow, that's quick.
You said you wanted out fast.
Go back to ours and hand it over to you as well. So I got a few things that I didn't get all on the agenda. The main one was Rave, but just some updates will be later after that. Uh, the big one right now is Rave. I've been working on it fairly steadily. It has been an issue, or I shouldn't say an issue, but it's been a slow-moving process. Uh, found out that when we did our Alert Sense, they did all the work for me. I didn't have to worry about ULRs, um, uh, different codes, QR codes. They did that stuff for me. I'm taking crash course and learning how to do it myself because I got to do it. So they are helping me. It's a slow process. I'm going to be with them next Wednesday again, and they'll help me get through some more of it. And then they did send me some more information this morning, so I will be working on that as well the next couple of days to get up and get the publics. The public can get on it and start using it. We can use it right now, but there's only like four or five of them.
By day, you're talking Rave?
Rave, yes.
Okay, and then by day, up there is the group that you've got.
The Alert Sense, I just use that as a, as a comparison. Uh, with the Rave, I had to do a lot of this on my own where the previous company we worked with, I didn't have to worry about these. Learning process, taking a little longer than I was hoping, but we are working on it. And I hope within the next month, we can start handing out flyers and the public can get on it.
Is there something that somebody else could help you with?
Not really. I'm hoping it is. Uh, I just don't have a, it's just a lot of internet computer-type stuff, and I just don't know a lot. People that know that stuff off the back of their hand that are local, you know, to help me out. I got a son in college that if I didn't come back and help him, he would be able to have it looked out pretty quickly.
Did you follow through with District 3? Because they're the ones that did the recommendation for us. And they have 18.
I could ask him. I just never thought about them, that they would do something like that for us. I can, I can check with the people down there and see if they can help me out.
Is it John Clem? Oh, where did he go? I think it's.
I can get you the information on.
Yeah, I got a couple other numbers. There's John and I can't think of the other names. I've been working with different projects with the county on that, but, uh, so it is coming along. Just taking a little longer than I was hoping. Uh, the other thing is, is our program up in Hand County, Alert Sense, I talked about previously. They are going to jack prices up on Hand County. We pay about $1,650 a year right now. They're going to crank it up on us five-year. And that's something that's come to our attention over the last couple of months. So we're talking with Audrey with Rave. She had mentioned combining Hand County with Buffalo County on the current program, the contract, and then just split it. So right now, Buffalo County's paying right at $3,000 a year, and it's a five-year contract. Uh, she had mentioned a good idea would be to migrate Hand County into Buffalo County and split them. What it would do is be a savings for both counties. Buffalo County would go from 3,000 to 1,500, and then Hand County would pay the other $200.
You dropped from what? What did you say you paid?
Right now, we pay 1,650, so $1,600. So we'd save about $150 bucks a year.
Is that a month or a year?
Year.
Year, year.
But it's going to go up to?
Yeah, they're going to grant our price way up. So.
When we talked to them, we got a good comment because remember we got it at our old price.
Right, but Rave brought this up.
Yeah, they brought it up.
Yeah.
If they merged, they wouldn't change the price. It'd be the same. You guys would pay the fee every year since it's under your name, but then Hand County would pay you $1,500.
Right.
Would pay for half.
For three years, correct? Three years? Was it a three-year or a five-year? I don't remember. Five years?
But it wouldn't start until next year, is that right?
Until 2025, yeah. So we're paid through the end of 2020. So it would, um, if you guys are okay with that, I still have to run it by, uh, the Hand County Commission. I haven't taken it to them yet and tell them what's going on. If you're not interested, that's fine. We'll, we'll find our own, our own product or stay with them, whatever we decide.
I guess in my mind, it's a win-win for everybody. Cuts ours in half.
Our usage. So I, I got our usage that we use it for every year. I sent it to Audrey. She looked at that and she was like, man, we can, we can absorb this into the contract that they already have, and we'll be fine. Now, in five years, I don't know what that's going to change in five years. I can't see that. Right, everything goes up. We know that, but we don't know for four years or five years until.
The purpose of why we did Rave is when we went into the 911, we knew there was going to be a collapse. And we've gone a couple of years here, you know, it's been four or five years. That's why we went to Rave, so we could all communicate, you know? Because hopefully when the 911 gets implemented.
Yeah, and that's a lot of the information that we're working on. I, I spent a couple of days going through the questionnaire, trying to simplify it. And, because it really, it's five or six pages long. It asks everybody medical information and stuff like that. Uh, kind of went through that and weeded some of that out that I didn't figure, feel was important to have on there. Some of that stuff is, whether you're handicapped, things like that during evacuations. Could be a good thing to know. But most of, when 911 stuff goes in, they're going to have that in. So that's been kind of what I've been working on, getting all those things kind of meshed out.
We have to make a motion on that, Steve, to include Hand County, are you?
We have to amend our contract.
It won't hurt you.
Okay.
Yeah, we got a contract. We have to.
Do you want to wait until you get the check for 2025?
I think we had a motion to get your approval. I think it's favorable here.
Okay.
Get your approval.
As long as you guys are okay with it, I'll take it to my commission today, and I'll run it by them.
Yep.
And I'll have them make a motion today, hopefully that.
Okay.
I think that's the way to do it and then bring it back. I don't see any reason why we would not. But we have to do it, bend the contracts.
So that's, like I said, been a process. We're working on it. I'll keep you in tune on what's going on as we progress forward. Do my notes here. So some of the other projects, nothing we have to decide anything on, just more information. So you guys know what I've been doing for the last couple of months for Buffalo County. Uh, I did write a grant for the Homeland Security Grant. Um, we talked a little bit about this in the past, but I applied for 20 radios for the county of County Highway Department and the Fire Department. Out of the 20 I applied for, we were able to get 13 of them covered. Um, that's about $31,000.
These have been upgraded once, right? We're not going back to analogs?
These do have analog in them, and yours?
Both, because I know after a certain time, there is going to be no more analog, so.
I think we probably way after we've launched it for the new analog.
I don't know. I know a lot of the stuff, now the state, then is not analog, so.
Uh, the state doesn't use analog much, um, but we're, the counties are independent from the state.
I understand. And then you've got 340 County over here that's not analog either.
So we'll get 13 of those. Those come in October. Can't order them. We're doing them with those until we get the okay from Homeland Security. And then the Homeland Security state side will have the money that we get to sell. So since then, there's been a little change. There has been a cut federally. FEMA's been cut a lot of money by the current administration, and so we're starting to see that trickle down to the states. So with Homeland Security, they've cut us back 11% after we made our decisions. So then we had to meet again and talk about how we could like get that difference of about $33,000 is what we had to cut from all of the projects throughout the region. Uh, we did have one county that chose to pull their product, project completely off of radar, and that was about $28,000. So that took the bulk of it. By doing that, then we just split the difference. So everybody that had a project, basically will take about a $300 cut. So a grant that usually is 100% covered, it's going to cost us $300 this year. So, um, not bad for a $30,000.
So this year, we got a cost share, which is.
Yeah, for $300. So that'll be something the Fire Department and County can work out, whether one wants to eat it or just if they want a shared cost. It's $300. It shouldn't be super, super big deal, but it'll be something that'll happen in the fall. Out of that, I was able to secure another 11 radios from other regions and counties in our region that they were able to get new ones in their projects previously. So they gave up their radios to us, and I was able to program them. So there was 11 radios I was able to program. Uh, delivered several of them to the Fire Department, and Tanner's got a few as well. And that'll get us by. Fire Department can get those installed. They'll have the access to the radio system. When the new ones come in, then we'll decide where the new ones are going to go and where they're going to. So there should be plenty of radios to go around now. I think Tanner might have mentioned this last month, that right now Hand County is working on purchasing a drone through our LEPC. Over the years, we've, Hand County has collected monies through the program that's left over. We got to spend it down to about $200 or less each year. But we always have a little bit left over. Well, over the last couple of decades, that's built up to a fair amount of money. And County can see this, and you need to spend that money up. So we're looking at purchasing a drone. These monies were previous to our agreement before we merged. So those, the drone will be owned by Hand County, but it'll be an asset or resource to Buffalo as well. That'll be in your process as I work on getting my license.
So you can do the licensing then?
Yeah, we'll have to do the licensing and all the testing.
There's a lot to it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and that's spurred from when we had our search and rescue. I had seven or eight drones in the county, and I called from all over the state, and they were busy.
Tommy's got some.
Yep, Tommy was next on the list. I didn't know we had one until we were almost done.
I know Tommy, I think Blue Light's got one too.
Um, Spotters, we've got a few Spotters in. Buffalo County helping. Tanner's been helping. Uh, and then Wesley Wolf. We've been out a few times in the last couple of weeks, kind of keeping an eye on storms coming up. Uh, thankfully, most of them that come over top of you guys weren't super severe. Uh, we did have some issues up in Hand County in the last one, where we did lose some roads and lost part of the railroad tracks. But we'll keep working on that. And then I was up last month, and the guys had a couple of roads washed out through some heavy rains, and so Tanner with the crisis track. Unfortunately, nobody else in the state had any damage, so we didn't, didn't move forward from disasters.
All right.
That's kind of in a nutshell what I've been doing, um, what I'm working on. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Were you able to print that out for me?
I can.
Could you? I was going to let you know that I know you and the county, we in the county are working together, but Tribe's also a part of the emergency management part. It's called Great Place Regional Tribal Chairman. They are having their summit, their tribal summit, June 18th and 21st in Oklahoma. And it's like 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, five states, Montana, North Dakota, South Dakota.
Cause you have to print it.
Nebraska, Minnesota. And I plan on going out and just come off and do that invitation. Because I think it would be a good opportunity to just find out what federal funds are coming down that we might be eligible for also. And also for our 911.
Yes, I'll get that information.
Okay, well, I'm going to have it printed. I don't know. I got a new phone, I don't have to do it anymore, so.
Do you want me to print them, or do you want them up there?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Now, that first day, that Monday, has our meeting now, isn't it? Isn't that when we said we were going to have our?
The second.
No, the 18th.
So the following week?
Are you talking the weed meeting and the next commission meeting? It's the 18th.
Okay, so it's not then? Okay, good. I was going to say, I couldn't make that part, but there are two days. Then that's the agenda. And then it also has the brochure.
Yeah, you just wanted to forward that to, to him.
There is no cost word, and it's just that, I think it's Arrowhead, the cop course there in Oklahoma.
There's the other one. So it's three days, 18th through the 21st?
Yeah.
But I also gave you the agenda, so, you know, you might be able to pick and choose or whatever. And I know another thing that I'm working on too is, uh, the last time we went in for your emergency dollars, we did storm shelters. Gan Valley got one here out of the grant, and then the Tribe did one, and I think we got like 15. I'm not too sure. And don't get me wrong, sorry guys. They're nice little shelters. They're probably the size of this, that, and you can, what, five, six people? We got families, you know? So I'm looking for a design that we could possibly do underground so that we can be FEMA certified, you know, anything like that. We were working out of that guy from Platte where we got those storm shelters. He paid like $10,000, pretty close $10,000 apiece from. So I think at $10,000, we ought to be able to get something a little bigger for some of those families.
The mitigation ones that you forget. So Miller's got one, one in their park. Uh, that was about $315,000, but I think they paid for $300,000 of it. The city paid for 50, because they put showers and stuff in. They are trying to get another one for the ballpark. Those are above ground. I don't know of any that are doing a foreground anymore, but I can look and see where I can find out. Those are a cost share. I'm looking at, um, FEMA pays 75%, the state will pay 10%, so you'd have to come up with 15% of it. But there are different sizes.
Yeah, and I want one more for a family, say maybe a family of 10 or something. We do have a couple of those, things like you're talking about too. We need to get some repair done for them, but I'm making up those ones that don't go right there in the district. They're out in the community, out more in remote areas.
Okay.
And it would be nice, and I'm looking for a plan, let's see if we can find a plan.
We got ahold of Tommy and see what he can help me with.
Tommy knows too. We talked about that. Because we, we can get some more of those little ones, but when you got a family of nine, they can do stand-up until the storm's gone, because, you know, there's no way to go, so.
Right. Yeah, there, um, there are several that are super expensive. What it is about them that they're so expensive, but they're starting to, quite a few across the state. Get the state policy.
Okay, appreciate it.
The processes.
And I'm hoping that we can come up with some ideas, because we're not the only ones that are looking for some smaller ones. And we got one size of this room, you know? But that isn't going to help those that are out.
So there is, I learned this this year, St. Lawrence is able to do it. But they did this for a study, because we might have a landslide that's sliding through. And if it blocks that creek, it backs up into some city. And there's, it's, I can't remember the exact name, but it's a disadvantaged community grant, which is the mitigation grant, but by doing that, it's based off your population and.
Rural status.
Right. And St. Lawrence qualified for it. Gan Valley would qualify for it pretty easily, but that pays 100% of it. So you don't have that cost share. What product or what projects we've followed or that, I don't know, because I'm learning more about it every day, but I'll look into that and see if that.
All right, thanks.
This one is June 18th. At Arrowhead, is that sure? Of course.
18th, that's our. When do I see that date?
Yeah, I took this down too soon.
So the agenda though says the 12th.
Yeah.
It did. Let's see.
Lee, you sent, are you going to email that to me?
I sure can.
Took the other one, say she had two emails. The agenda that I gave my, it's either the 12th. Because this is this year's, right? I don't know what I sent you.
Yeah.
It says, it says.
2023 in Rapid City.
Oh, that's the 2023.
Okay, so we don't have an agenda for the.
Okay, so we'll close that one.
Thank you.
Well, that's all I have. So if you have any more questions, I'm going to screw it up to the other.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, fuel prices.
On the backside of your.
Methanol's 287, number two, 277. Second.
All in favor? Should pass, thank you.
Um, I don't have no pictures or nothing from today. Finished pulling some shoulders with the retriever. Finished retrieving, finished pulling shoulders for the most part, except for the projects later in the year. Been blading, hauled some gravel, worked on some more intersections, trying to get them built up. I had El Chap come out and do a training yesterday, it was, and they just teach you about a little everything between gravel and, and running a blade. So hopefully that helped. Had two people from Brule County that were new come down to that also. I got a meeting supposed to go to next Wednesday and Thursday here. Don't leave a room. And then there's an office. I think one in here in a couple of weeks. I don't remember the date, but that one does cost a hundred. At that.
So what's the one in here next week?
Uh, the summer conference. And then the one in here in his office, it's like with Rod Ford and then the, that kind of stuff. Sprayer's ready to go. I started this when the wind quit. And the mowers, got that finally set up, and it's ready to go. Actually, we started the day on township. Keep it close to town. Hopefully, you know, we'll see how that goes. Been working on the budget, hauled some clay, and we've been mixing some gravel up here, but put on some roads where they washboard bad and, you know. Other than that. For this time.
Okay.
Short one.
Thank you.
Lee?
Where we put it on last year, that first mile, yeah. It's way better than what it is here.
Yeah, it's holding up pretty good.
Yeah, I like the stuff we're mixing anyway.
Okay.
Okay. Then for DOE update, just quit, there's been quite a few requests actually for new addresses. All four Thompson, uh, so we've been helping them out, new 911 addresses or a name, name change. So finished up a couple more this morning. Uh, new software, I guess, rolls out, I think they said in July. Uh, so there's some people excited about that. It's still Ultra, but it's, uh, it's an upgrade, the upgrades they keep talking about. Got a prioritized list for assessments and where to start and get those going. Uh, weed and pest. Uh, I think Tanner mentioned gut sprayer ready, weather permitting, maybe Monday or next week.
First day or Wednesday going?
Yep. Get that going. We have a weed meeting scheduled. I don't have an agenda out yet. That'll be June 18th. And I've gotten responses back, some responses back. I sent out a text out to everybody, and I'll do email and phone calls and follow-up there. Uh, the grant money that we had this last time around, I submitted invoices, and we've received all that. We don't, haven't had a check come in yet, but that was sent off. And I think Brenda's blessed that. I guess it sounded good. So that was all for chemical. And that was $3,400 that we'll be getting back. And the grant for the next time around, that'd be 2025, will be $6,200. That's been approved. So chemical, um, informational meetings, we're going to spend 12,400 to get the 62 back. It's 50-50 cost share, so just like the 3,400 was, so. And we've had one request for not to spray right away. And I think that's flagged, and we've been talking about that. We'll verify that on the map. It's been the only one we've received, so we'll get that and noted, and we'll skip that spot. Yep, that's all I have.
You ready?
Yep.
Okay, there were zero hospitalizations for the month. On there should be your treasure auditor report. They matched up, so they should be good to go on that one. If you have any questions on that. Next is C9C contingency transfers. I put a budget on there so you guys can kind of see what I'm talking about, but I am requesting from the commissioners, the three, the one, two, and three on there, the 5,000 contingency. We've had, uh, some, and you guys will see it in the vouchers, quite a few of the
Court-appointed attorneys.
And we, we're only halfway through, and I just got another one. There should be two in there coming up. So, um, we might have to do this again in a couple, in three or four months, but I hate to over-budget to, to, to do it. So I'm requesting $5,000 for that. That $22,000, um, that's coded where I have it there. And Steve, he had asked, Rex had asked about that a little bit earlier, that $22,000 kind of, a little bit, and it sounded like maybe it's still going back to litigation as far as it.
No, what happened was I, um, we got ours and theirs money together. I sent out a settlement thing for all three to sign, and they all three signed it. I sent it back to the hospital with the money, so it should be done.
Should be done?
That should be done, as far as we can control it at this point.
Okay.
You can.
I think his question was the ones in minutes. He wanted to document what the $22,000 went for.
Just explain to people why we pay.
It was, it was medical bills related to, uh.
And some of the.
This is a jail, and we have, and they have no.
Yeah, it's in jail and, uh, and we have, uh, and they have no. They fit up the court, I mean, people, they have nothing, so. Uh, literally, I'll just give you a better example. Started about a quarter million bucks, uh, we got them down to eighty-eight. That's what they wanted. I bargained it out to, um. Down to twenty-two, so we came a long way. We came from way up here to way down here. Still not a good number, but, um.
Better than it could have been.
Yeah, much better than it started. And it's been over, uh, this is a bill from years ago. We've been trying to resolve. I, we believe, I, I didn't commission and I believe it was a. Really good resolution. Done.
Yeah, that's just so people know.
Yeah, I, I understand. See twenty thousand going out and you think, geez, that's a lot of money. When you start at the quarter million and it comes down to that, it's still a lot of money, but it's not as much as we're.
And then the third one on there is the extension and they are going to be having their fair and stuff like that come on. So she may be staying overnight, which is very minimal for what we spent for that. But I just wanted the two thousand cushion on there because we were negative on that already, I believe. So. But if you, the three of you could look at it and then approve or deny whichever ones you want and then.
So basically you're trying to double your budget because you already put twenty-five hundred in there.
Correct.
And they usually zoom us that first week. That's usually zeroed out.
So I've already, we've already paid for her salary.
Yeah.
And does she come here or do we have to go to Geralt County?
I would have to ask, I'm not a four-ager or have kids in four-ages, so I don't.
She used to come here, I mean, there.
I was going to say, I haven't seen her.
But I, you know, I don't, can't have any.
And I don't have a problem paying that because it's for the kids, but I would like to see them over here as opposed to having to go.
Yeah.
I think she's housed in Geralt.
There are like three counties that.
Well, she dropped off one of them.
Did she?
Yeah, one of them she's not anymore. So I, but I can't remember. Think it's Aurora, but don't.
Aurora's Plankton.
Yeah.
Then they go to Forestburg, all the way to Forestburg to them.
Sandborne. She either gave up Sandborne or Aurora. I don't remember which one.
But to meet that, you know, you have to, within our budget, have the sixty forty rule. So we would still meet that sixty forty. A lot of us aren't going to. So.
As long as she's coming this way, I don't have a problem with it.
So I just need you guys to.
Can I have, um, a motion to, uh. Go ahead and do these contingency transfers? Um. All in favor? Thank you.
All right, I'll just kind of keep moving on here. So then ten is canvass, canvassing. So there should be a, a sheet on there for canvassing for you guys. There were some in the back, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about what elections are like before we move into this. So we had an election day and our, a school, so there were three different schools. We did one here. Then we went to Fort Thompson, then we went to Crow Creek. Danita was there. I thought everything went really smooth with, uh, with everybody that was there. We set everything up, so it was ready to go the next day.
And you got some.
Yeah, I'm good. I was wondering about that. I'm good. And so they, they counted all the ballots that were there at that time. So we were going to do three hundred at one side and then do the other ballots. We had them, you know, tie it all up, make sure it was secure, put an end tab on. We brought it back here and then we had some runners first thing in the morning and that was Carol Graven had a great idea on that. I was going to have each commissioner keep them and then have to come first thing in the morning to open it, but it worked really well and it was all wolves. So the wolf came and did, we had two Democrats, two Republicans, and so we were able to do that and that went just fine. So then election day was thirteen hours for the election workers, guys. That's a long time to sit because we did not have very many people come through. And so.
We had more meeting at my district meeting this afternoon than the whole county.
And then when the polls ended, we had the sheriff so that, because he can take the ballots and go from point A to point B. So I thought that was a smoother way of doing it than we've done in the past, so thank you for doing that. And then Lee came and he packed up everything and sheriff did that as well and brought everything back. So I think that it went really well. And then right after the boards, we have three, four boards that have to come up after that. So once the elections are done and everything's closed, then there's some tabulations that have to happen. And so then we have our boards come and they put it through the tabulation machine. For lack of better terms, it's kind of like, uh. I, you know, in Iowa basics, when you had to fill in the little circles and then you, you, they ran, it's about the same thing as that. There's no computer in it or anything else, but. So then there were four of them. They came and did their portion. And so they opened the ballot boxes, then they ran through the tabulator, then they had to reseal. So we have three ballot boxes that are in the sealed up. We have the end tabs in there. So those are sealed, waiting for next Tuesday. So that's where those are sitting right now. And then there had to be two people that would oversee and, and, and fill in and did, Karen was the person that did it with me. So you had to look at the, those tabs that we're going to look at here pretty soon. She would write it down and tell me what it was, then I would put it into the system and send it to the state. So there's no sending any information or there would be no internet connections that would be done that way or anything else. So then we sent it to the secretary of state, then the secretary of state inputs it and puts it through within five minutes. It was done within five minutes. Then I have to print off. What we're going to sign here in a little bit. And so then, after this, I have to keep everything for the canvas. This is considered the canvassing, you guys. So you guys are the canvassing board. And then we'll have the post-election, which is a new thing next Tuesday. We're going to start the school at eleven. And then we'll just go right after that because I don't think it's going to take very long, you guys. So that's kind of the breakdown of how, how it goes, so. So if we can go ahead, if you got that sheet. You guys all have to.
Was this about the school, the, the post-election thing?
Yep. So your post-election is, you should have, you have to have odd numbers. So right now, I have Mr. Anderson. And she's going to join us, so I appreciate you doing that. And then Kathy Yost. And so you have to have Republicans and Democrats even up, so we need two more people. If we wanted two more people, they could certainly come. I don't think this post-election is going to be a big deal because there wasn't enough people.
Right.
You guys, so.
It's good practice.
I, I agree, so. Lots is going, and those, that post-election is paid for by the state, so I have to just write down and they'll reimburse me that one. So that's kind of a breakdown of what happened Monday and Tuesday. But you guys can look at your tabulation, those sheets. So we'll start with precinct one. There were six total. So Mary Ann had three. Joseph Biden Junior had two. And Dean Phillips had one. So again, total votes were six on precinct. One. Precinct two, there were eight total. Of that eight total, Joe Biden, four, Dean Phillips. Make sure I'm right, one. And Armando had three. So then. There was, nobody showed to do the school election. There would have been, so. That was a zero. So precinct three, there was twenty-two. So of that, we have Mary Ann, three. Biden, fourteen. Dean, two. And Armando, three. And that would conclude our canvassing of the elections. So would you hand that to Don? So I would need you guys to sign it, to say that those were right. And then I'll put a seal on it and it goes to the state.
Do you want these back?
Nope, they're all yours. Oh, and then on the back page of that, is there a second page?
The second and third tally.
The third, the third page that's on there, I'm going to start using that. I'll probably change it just a little bit, but that's, just, that should show you exactly what. So there's a recap that comes, so this is what the recap looks like. So that recap for each precinct should have exactly what's on that sheet. And then there's this form that comes through. So Danita, your, your folks sat there, Bonnie sat there, so they have to sign off on that. So we can see what that did, what this did, and then there's also a poll book in here. So there's, there's so many eyes on this, you guys, that there's no way that it could, that it could be cheated upon at this point. I just kind of want to give a breakdown a little bit of what, what actually happens, so.
Did you find the border registrations?
Yep. So if you guys can say yes, I need a motion from all you guys for the canvassing board to. To, to accept the canvassing board or canvass.
Yeah, to accept the results, yeah. All in favor? Thank you.
So then I just wanted to, on number eleven, just wanted to let people know that we'd be having that board. It's open to the public, so, um, and it's been in the newspaper, so it should be good to go for that.
What time is that due?
One, at eleven o'clock, eleven eleven. Yep. And then we're just going to follow up right after that, so. We will be having our budget, annual budget meeting. I've sent it to most of people. I think there's another one laying on there too. If you, you and guys wanted to change anything that's on there, I'll. But, um, so that will be the eighteenth, I think, is.
Yeah, the eighteenth at one.
So. So number thirteen, reimbursements. You'll see for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, it's changed, but when you say fiscal year, it changes this July.
Right.
For, that's, so you'll just see that it changed. Went from, what is it? Fifty-one to sixty-three or sixty-five, okay.
Something I just wrote down.
So that was just an informational thing. I guess we're up to, um, executive if you guys needed anything.
Do we need an executive session for anything?
Okay, so next is vouchers. Don has all the vouchers right there. I did everything that was possibly on there that I could for. So you'll see the transmittals from May. So the transmittals are always a month because you guys had the meetings and then we. Yep, and then payroll and then now the transmittals up right now.
So we paid for that tractor?
Yep.
Yeah, payroll there.
That's been a good one.
Yeah.
And then there were two more vouchers that did. Come through today, so I'd like to add those. One is going to be for Amkota for seventy-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. And then I got another one from Aurora Brule for thirty dollars and fifty cents. One, yeah. And Tanner would probably have another one coming as well, so if I could just, you guys know that, I'll just add those in.
This can be Peter Loftus, is that to do with this guy in Chamber?
That's the one I emailed you guys, you and Dave.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seventy-one hundred.
Yeah.
Of everything, I don't know why I circled it for you, but, but it's just that this is what our total budget is. This is what this total budget is. So if you look at the bigger.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Like, it's right here.
Yeah, it's old, I mean. That brand.
Oh, okay.
She, she exhausted her state appeal. That was actually a federal.
Oh, really?
But I think it's.
So that should be very, and the, the one oh one.
I think that's what's.
The one oh ones. No, they'll go to the two oh ones, just say two oh one. So those are all your one oh ones.
Okay.
They'll go to two oh one.
Okay, all right.
So like, how much did this election bring up cost and if you added all them together roughly? Or you never did.
On, on that budget sheet that you have there. Should say where we're at, right here. There should be an election line.
About four thousand, what we've spent so far. I have a budget of thirty thousand.
I haven't just done this primary.
Just done the primary. Now you're just going to have that, that more.
Republicans get to vote next time.
Yeah. Well, I know there was one precinct in Chamber and it wasn't even open. It, uh, four H building.
We had low numbers because we had no Republicans. I mean, that's basically.
Yeah, we really didn't have anything to vote for.
I mean, there were some bigger counties that had less than the thirty, whatever. I think there was a, so.
You said like seven.
I think we were the third lowest, but. We weren't that rough. And Danita was doing a really good job, you guys, of getting out there and getting the new voters, so.
Well, I tried to update the invalid ones, I think a lot of them matter. I think they're still registered, but they couldn't vote this time because they have to fill out anyway. They knew they couldn't vote this time, but they'll be there for, for November election.
Okay. Well, we'll see if we can get past Mr. Anderson. So can I have an approval for the vouchers or?
I would think you can.
Do you have any motion or should I?
On the.
Vouchers. I'll say that. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you.
June nineteenth, the offices will be closed. I put on there, Tanner, your, your one thing I put on for the highway department workshop, so
And that's my due week, right? Wednesday, Thursday.
That's the summer conference and this one is just that one they do on here.
Correct. I'd like to include that training bill for emergency management. Or if anyone wants to go.
Okay, that you know, it really went to, to everything.
Balance it out easier.
And then Don had sent me or called to, the governor did give off
Well, the, the day after the fourth.
But I think our next meeting will actually be on the second.
I think so.
So I think, but
But yeah, she, um I, well, we put on our memorial barrel race for our daughter in Huron and I was visiting with them up there and they were having it the sixth of July and the gal told me, she said, well, Noam is given the state holiday or whatever, July fifth, so she just hit heads with me. So I let, yeah, know that I knew that.
So anyhow, the next meeting's the post-election audit will be on the eleventh. There'll be a weed meeting on the eighteenth.
At noon.
At noon, yep. And then the budget meeting. So I think all you guys should, I think I emailed it to everybody today. Did I email it to you guys?
Yeah, I got it because I printed it all out.
Rex, you got yours? Danita, you got yours? Or do I, I can give you, okay, and everybody here should have theirs, so we should be able to and then during that meeting, you guys could pass the treasure as well with that one.
Yeah.
We're getting pretty low for for Janice, for the for her portion of something. We're okay right now, but I think it'd probably be better to just do a contingency. So
Okay.
Budget meeting, then regular meeting. Did we want to do it on the second?
I don't see why not.
That's all I have.
All right, there's about thirteen. Do they change the travel rate? You've got never
She talked about that.
I'm sorry, what did I, been here?
I just, yeah, kind of went right straight. It went
Sixty-three or sixty-five.
Yeah, well, second page.
I can't remember. I got it.
State.
Yeah.
That must be federal change too.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
IRS.
Yeah, there was IRS something.
That's what the IRS allows businesses to travel.
Yeah, I know. I just had it.
So there's something on the second page and then back.
Yeah, here. Yeah, sixty-five of the half. So can I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you.